Okay, let's call to order and have the roll call, please.
Okay. Nancy Kapka?
President.
Mike Davenport?
Here.
Terry Pavisic?
Here.
Rick Cavanado?
Here.
Duane Vasquez-Drexler?
Here.
Zoe Boyd?
Here.
Sam Bull?
Here.
Thank you.
Let's stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. Oh, here comes Sherrell.
Sherrell Fuller?
Here.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America.
And to the republic.
For which it stands. One nation, under God. Indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome back. We'll start with --
Everybody.
It is good to see everybody. We'll start with student perspectives.
Yep, we have North High School here this evening.
Good evening, everyone. I am Mark Marindola, Director of Student Activities at North. It is my pleasure to introduce Annika Oplonik and Edie Pollock. They'll be speaking to you in just a few moments about our Month of Kindness that's taking place at North throughout the month of February. I should also mention that I know that South has been doing a lot of the same efforts, different types of service projects and acts to promote kindness. So I definitely want to recognize their efforts as well. But what we decided to do this year was instead of just doing a Random Acts of Kindness Week or Recognizing the National Random Acts of Kindness Week, we decided, let's go ahead and spread the love throughout the entire month. Especially because I think we need kindness and promoting kindness more than ever. So that's what we've been doing. And Edie and Annika have been instrumental in a lot of the efforts that have been taking place throughout the month. They're both instrumental in the I Will Club. And so they'll talk a little bit about that. I know Annika serves as the president. But I Will is our Women in Leadership Club. And so they've had a big role in a number of these service projects and opportunities that have taken place throughout the month. So before they come up, I just want to give them a little bit more of an introduction. Annika Oplonik is President of I Will, like I mentioned, a member of our Student Advisory Council to the principal. She's involved in Direct Action, which is one of our service clubs, and is a member of the National Honor Society. And then Edie Pollock is a junior who's involved in band theater and finding countless ways to help those in need. So I'll have Annika step up first.
Hello, my name is Annika Oplonik. As Mr. Marindola said, I am the serving president of I Will. That stands for Independent Women in Leadership League. This is my second year as president, but I've been a part of the club since my freshman year. And I will specialize as in community service, but also empowering women. In the past, we've hosted women from the likes of NASA to the filming industry, all the way to the marketing field. And as for a past volunteering project, in October, we enlisted help of other North students in order to create 30 pumpkins for a local Saratoga Grove assisted living community. This year, earlier this year, I met Mary Beth Glenn, and she works with Metropolitan Family Services, which is a local family shelter. And we discussed COVID and the number of affected children that need support from their services. And we were talking, as I was there delivering food to drop off, and we were discussing how the first thing that new families, when they get there, they like to give these families an act of kindness, and often this takes form of a fleece blanket. So I thought, since they're running out of blankets through the holiday season, it would be a great idea to bring North together and T-99 together to create 60 blankets for their families. And so we work with NHS, we work with freshman class 4, T-99, and staff to create those blankets. And it was a beautiful way to bring the community together to extend a little bit of kindness to those families that are in need.
As well as I Will and Downers Grove North, NHS has also been doing a lot of good around the community. They've been, they made support bags for a lot of the teachers, including a lot of little candies. And students are also writing notes to a lot of teachers to express their support and their admiration for the teachers and how hard they're working in schools. As well as NHS and I Will, North has also been working on Feed 6. And that is a group where you can buy and purchase food packages. And each pack has 42 servings, so like 42 individual meals that can be given to low-income families or food insecure people that can be used to feed and nourish them. Any questions?
I just have a -- did you have something? I just have a comment and question. First of all, thank you both. This is incredible work, especially now when we really, really need it. I'm very proud of you. I remember, I think I remember, I think your organization's less than 10 years old.
Yeah. Yes, you are.
Women in Leadership, because I remember when it was first proposed. I did have one question. If somebody wants to make a contribution to any of these projects, can they, how would they go about doing that?
I believe there's, for some groups, there is a place on the website where you would go to pay for school feeds and things like that, where you could go and donate money to do that. But Mr. Brandola will answer our subplots, I'm sorry.
You are right.
I know, I think I've seen it on Facebook. But if somebody today wanted to just go and donate?
Yeah, so on the North High homepage, there's a link, I know, under, I believe it's news, for Feed 6 project. But also, if you go to the North High School web store, there's a link to where you can make a donation. And so like Edie mentioned, One Pantry Pack is what it's called. It costs $22.50. And there's 42 servings of food for a family in need. So you can make a donation in increments of the cost of the pantry pack, or you can just make an open donation as well. I should mention, up until this point, and I believe we started this a week, a week and a half ago, we've raised enough money for, I believe it's 283 pantry packs. That comes out to roughly 11,800-something meals that we've been able to donate to those in need. And so the other piece of this, then, is students have the opportunity to customize and really personalize these boxes of food so that it's truly a gift of food and a gift of dignity, rather than just straight food donations or canned goods. So these items or these boxes will then be decorated by students this week and next, and then donated to local food pantries as a gift of food.
Well, thank you so much. Thank you so much, and thank you for the community.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Student Board members.
Hello? Okay. So hi, everybody. It's been a minute since I've seen you all. But what's been happening lately, since we've last talked? Some sports are going on right now, even in wintertime, like the dance team, who did a great job this past weekend. They got third, both the JV and the varsity team in the WSC Conference. And also, girls' basketball is going on. They've been doing a really good job so far. I think this past weekend, both teams won their games. And lately, they've been allowing parents to come and watch the games, and they've been streaming them online for people to view. And activities, the speech season ended their season so far. They finished third at sectionals and competed this past weekend at state and did a great job. The chess team also qualified for state this past Thursday. So great job to them. I wish I could. And then, and then the Black History Play also premiered this past Friday, which was really great. If you didn't get a chance to see it, I think you still can on YouTube. And then some fine arts news that's been going on. The Spring Musical, High School Musical Junior's coming up pretty soon. And the choirs will also have a spring concert in March. And then finally, this past month's been Spirit Month, which I think is great timing. I think overall, a lot of us are getting into those February blues. So it was a nice time to bring in some spirit activities and to also bring attention to Black History Month. So some of the things that have been going on are students and staff posting pictures on Twitter and Instagram of inspirational quotes, which has been really nice. They've also been donating to DuPage Pads. And events have been hosted by the Umoja Club, which have been really fun, like movie night and trivia night. And then this week, I think there's a dress-up contest for Spirit Week. So yeah, that's about it.
I'm sorry, did you say a dress-up contest?
Yeah, for each of the classes, for Spirit Month.
Cool. Thank you.
Alrighty. On the DGN side of things, we had, well, across the district, actually, eight students were named as National Merit Scholars, finalists. And three of those were from DGN, so I guess DGS wins that one. But obviously, very proud of them. That's an incredible accomplishment. Also, doing some very cool things for Black History Month at North. The Black Student Union and Empowerment Club co-hosted an Allyship Zoom, I think it was the 18th, during the lunch period. And I attended that, and it was absolutely incredible. It was really just a combination of experiences that students and teachers have had with allyship, examples of allyship that they've seen, and then a presentation on how to get better, how to be there for the people who may be underprivileged in certain areas. So that was really, really cool, really educational, really eye-opening for me, at least, and I think it was for a lot of people, too. And I believe that there is another Black History Month-related Zoom event on the 25th this Thursday, which is, I believe it's an expert panel. So it will be the whole period, or the whole lunch break, where there will be some experts there to answer questions, which should be really, really cool. In terms of clubs, like Zoe said, our chess team also competed in state. I'm hearing that it was a 35th-place finish out of 113 teams, which is a jump from 103rd last year to 35th this year, which is a big improvements with the chess team. And Patrick Heverin, one of our seniors, I believe it's called the First Board. I'm not a big chess guy, but he's the number-one player, I guess. He won six out of his seven games. So a pretty impressive showing from the North chess team. Speech, like you said, also competed in state. I am hearing that nobody got to the final round, but Emmett Doolan, who I talked to, made sure to tell me that he was one point away. On the sports front, basketball has started, like Zoe said, among other sports. Gymnastics, swim and dive, badminton, Athenas. All those are being livestreamed, which is really, really great. A good way to stay connected, even though we can't be at the games. We did beat South in basketball, just so everyone knows. The boys are off to a 4-0 start, and the girls are off to a 3-0 start. So definitely a good start for basketball. And in general, it just seems that, like Zoe said, the February blues are kind of hitting. But what I've been able to notice is that a lot of students really like this schedule. A lot of students love being back in school. And they're looking forward to being back in school even more after spring break and hopefully, once COVID numbers go down and stay down. But then, on the other side of things, it seems like there are more people that are wanting to stay remote. I think the percentages have been increasing for that. So I think you're seeing definitely stronger attitudes on both sides. You're seeing the hybrid kids want to go even more hybrid, and then the remote kids want to stay remote in greater and greater numbers. So that's just an interesting thing that I've been able to notice. And another thing is with saliva testing. I think that's been a hot topic recently. And I've heard a lot of complaints. And most of them, I thought, I kind of brushed aside, such as all the conspiracies, I'm sure you guys are aware of, about China and everything. But obviously, some other stuff, like it being a waste of money and unnecessary, which I kind of brushed to the side personally. But something that I did notice that I thought had merit, which was a complaint, was that it seemed to be that there was kind of a lack of communication in terms of getting results. I think a lot of people didn't know whether or not they would be informed of the results. A lot of people didn't know the exact procedure. So there was a little bit of confusion there. But I think that in the last week or so, a sufficient amount of information has been given to students with the emails that have been sent, and it now being optional, that I think most of that is cleared up now. But in general, I mean, I would say things are going really well. People are really excited about the COVID numbers going down, especially seniors. I think a survey was sent out today about prom and graduation and how to plan for that. So, you know, I think people are just really excited to hopefully be somewhat normal by the end of the year.
Thank you. Questions, comments? Great reports, thank you both. Let's move on to the approval of minutes. We need a motion to approve the January 25, 2021 Business Meeting and January 25, 2021 Closed Meeting Minutes.
So moved.
Was it Terry? Terry and Jan?
Thank you. Terry Pavisic?
Aye.
Duane Vasquez-Drexler?
Aye.
Mike Davenport?
Aye.
Sherrell Fuller?
Aye.
Rick Cavanado?
Aye.
And Nancy Kapka?
Aye. The motion carries. We'll move on now to our reception of visitors and public comment. The meeting agenda includes two opportunities for comments from the audience. The first reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board about any agenda item on which the board will vote. The second reception of visitors is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments will be limited to three minutes. To provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board, individuals needing more time should submit their thoughts in writing to the Board Secretary. Visitors addressing the board need to come to the microphone and state their full name. The proceedings will be tape-recorded for the purpose of producing accurate minutes, and they are being livestreamed and recorded. I reserve the right to modify these protocols if circumstances warrant it, and we appreciate your observance of these protocols. Does anybody want to address the board? Hearing none, we'll move on to the recommendations and reports of the superintendent.
Good evening, everybody. Just some updates on the school year. And what I wanted to open with here was Gina just providing some feedback on the first month or so of our debut of Paper as a resource for our students. If you remember, this is that 24-by-7-by-365 online tutoring support system.
As you can see by the numbers, our students are using Paper. While it opened on January 4 with an email that went to families that week, to students to let them know how to use the resource and with information, we started a full rollout on January 25. So that is when we really saw the numbers spike. So over 2,300 sessions, or interactions, I should say, the 1,694 are actual chat-based sessions, and then essays, 648 that were uploaded. We're really excited because students are using it. And as I comb through some of the data, I see a lot of it occurring in certainly times when our teachers don't have office hours. So definitely a resource for our students 24/7, and they are using it. Math, of course, is the area that we did anticipate would be a high-usage area. And that's, those three are the highest equations, algebra and geometry. So just a little bit about Paper, and we've gotten some positive reports from students who have used it.
Yeah, this is what I was going to ask about anecdotal reporting. I know it's still kind of early.
So Paper, I met with Paper last week, in fact, our representative from Paper. And he shared, every time a student finishes a chat session, they have an opportunity to provide feedback. And he shared some of the feedback. And the comments were that it was helpful in answering the question. It was simple and easy to use. So students found it easy to use. They appreciated getting feedback on their papers. We also had some teachers who've been using it in class with their students, surveyed their students. And mostly, the positive, a lot of positive comments. A couple of comments about ways they thought the paper could improve with the upload of the actual paper. So that's something I'll bring back to the company. And then another one said that they could have gotten the same feedback if they, you know, would have reread their own paper. So, but otherwise, very positive. Easy to use, valuable feedback. They altered what they turned in as a result of it.
Cool. Question?
Is this on now? Another thing I have heard with Paper, from the student perspective, obviously, a lot of positive comments, like you said. But some complaints I've heard was that the Socratic method, which I think is something they use a lot, can be not necessarily the most helpful for things like math and physics, where a lot of students feel that you kind of just have to be taught the content. And the tutors might see that as cheating, or whatever that is, because they're not supposed to actually say what the answer is. But I think a lot of students were struggling with conversations with the tutors because it was a lot of them, a lot of the tutors just asking questions and questions and questions when they just needed help with how to do a specific portion of a physics problem or something like that. But like you said, yeah, the majority of the comments I've heard have been positive. But that's something I've heard that has been something to improve.
Thank you. Thank you.
So the next big topic of news was the release, not last Friday, but the Friday before, from the CDC and the United States Department of Education on updated guidance on responding to COVID in schools. This is probably the most, well, not probably, definitely the most clear guidance that we've received up to this point in this school year. And I'm sure some of that is, they're getting used to the types of questions and understanding the operation of schools a little more. Some of it is, we understand the virus a little bit more. So I think those two things are playing together. But we do definitely appreciate that the guidance is much more clear than it has been in the past. And then another major change that occurred with this release of guidance was, for the first time, the CDC hosted a webinar for superintendents with members of the CDC on the call to answer our questions directly in real time around the guidance, which was a huge change from what we've had in the past. So that was greatly appreciated. So between reading those documents and summarizing them, talking through them, attending the webinar, and then today, when we met with the DuPage County Health Department, they mirrored a lot of this language, moving in this direction, supporting these changes. So it seems like there is a strong movement in the direction of the guidance that I'm about to share. I did provide the board a detailed overview of this. This is kind of the highlights and for the public to follow along as well. All right, so obviously, you know, CDC, nobody's 100% responsible for schools. But we, as schools, need to look at all of the guidance from the federal, state, and local level and integrate that responsibly into our practices. One of the things that I found interesting from the webinar with the CDC was the differentiation they were making between elementary students and high school students. And that they felt like a lot of the clear research was on younger children. And at the high school level, it wasn't so clear. The information wasn't so clear coming out. There wasn't as much research being done on the high school population. But their general takeaway was, high school students think of them as adults. Like, a lot of the data that they're seeing for high school-age students is very similar to what they're seeing for the adult population. And then the CDC also, in this webinar, reinforced the need for schools to continually look at what's happening inside of their own school district, learn step by step, and adapt accordingly. So as you learn something, as you implement something, you learn from that, adjust, and then just keep slowly moving forward responsibly. We know that this is Volume 1 of the CDC guidance. And they say to expect every month, moving forward, another volume of guidance. And they said that next months will be strongly weighted around social and emotional response to the pandemic. So we look forward to seeing that in the next month. So these were the key themes in the guidance. And I'm going to give you the highlights of each of these areas tonight. They continue to clarify and emphasize these five mitigation strategies. So masks and physical distancing, they talk about, are the two primary ways to mitigate COVID at school. But then they strongly talked about the next one in that line is the last bullet, contact tracing, and making sure that people that are sick or showing symptoms aren't at school or are immediately removed from school. And that that is a key piece to keeping schools safe. They also talked about how screenings can play an important part in making that more rapid, especially for people that are asymptomatic. For the first time, since this all started, we got a clear definition between what physical distancing and physical distancing, if possible, mean from the CDC. All along up until now, it's, you know, you've had physical distancing, if possible. And depending on which expert or official you talk to, they would say that, like, if possible means, yes, you have to physical distance at all times. And others would say, well, if you can, right? And it just depended on where it was. The officials in Illinois have leaned more towards physical distancing at all times. And especially in the county, that we should be maintaining physical distance at all times. The CDC was very clear now about community metrics dictating when that is at all times and when it is if possible. Okay? And I've tried to spell out what they shared with us in that call and what the documentation shares. But when they're, we're in these high levels, and you're going to see these levels, how they break out in a second. We're in the two highest levels, it is stringent. Six feet of social distancing, you must maintain that. Then we're in the two lowest levels of community transmission, it moves into that if possible. So they say, yeah, just spread everybody, bring everybody back, spread them apart as far as the room allows in that space. But then do other things that you can do. So at the high school level, do a block schedule-type approach. They didn't say block schedule, but they said, do schedules where you can limit the mixing of students, which is why we have the block schedule. You know, look at these different strategies so you can keep kids together in pods or cohorts, or just not mixing with as many people as possible. So, yeah, when they're in their classroom with the students they're surrounded by all day, when you're in those lower levels, you know, spread them apart. If it's three feet, if it's five feet, if it's six, if it's 10, the more, the better. But, you know, the importance at that point during low levels is get everybody back. And then when the levels get higher, it gets more important to keep them all separated. So it was great to get that differentiated approach. There was some conversation about screenings. And as everybody knows, the guidance talks very clearly about screenings as a tool and how they're supposed to work. In there, they outline, they make a strong case for screening programs, just to identify students and to be able to quarantine them. And then they open up a new set of metrics, which I'm about to share with you, that is open to schools that are utilizing screening practices. And in those screening practices, it makes the bar to return to fully remote learning much higher than what it was before. So as a result of those guidelines, the board knows, the public knows, we shared last week that we chose to move to an optional screening process. We still anticipate that many people will take advantage of that. And we began that implementation last week. Just reminding everybody that up on the website are all of the signed contracts around privacy, for people that have concerns about that, and FAQs. And I talked about the rest. All right, so community transmission changed. You know, the last time we were looking at 14-day rolling averages, it was one of the two indicators. Now they come out very clearly and say that these are the community metrics that should be relied upon. Total number of cases per 100,000 persons in the last seven days and the positivity rate during the last seven days. That we look at that every week. So eventually, I'm going to come back to the board with a recommendation of weekly based on these metrics, assuming everything continues to move forward. And then they just talk, they once again continue in every call to talk about, whether it's the Health Department or the CDC or anybody that I've been working with, keeps sending out the red flag about these new variants could cause conditions to change rapidly, depending on what happens with them. You can see those phases, they're the transmission levels down below, where they each fall.
And that is and, not or?
It is and. And I'll explain kind of how those two work together here in a second. So this is our data from 2/21. And this is for the District 99 community as we outlined it in prior meetings. And currently, our positivity rate sits at 4.42%. That's up a little bit from last week. We were down under four last week. And then the cases per 100,000 are at 105.1. So the way that this works is when the metrics are split, the worst metric determines the transmission level. So right now, we have one metric that is in low, and we have another metric that is in high. So the highest one wins. So we would be in the high transmission level right now. If that number was to drop under 100, then we would move, and positivity rate would stay the same, we'd move into substantial, so on and so forth, right? Until we move down in those different categories. All right. Lot going on on this chart. So there's two charts that are out there for the learning models that can be utilized. But the real split comes in the middle there. Okay? So in the low transmission level and moderate transmission level, in that, the goal is to get students back full in person. When you're in substantial or high, where we are now, you move into a hybrid learning model. And that's really the key delineation there. They talk how screening testing can impact that, and when we should be using screening. So if we drop into the low transmission level, we don't need to be screening anybody. I mean, we could continue to do it for families that would like that feedback, but there's no requirement to stay on this chart to continue doing screening. We can continue to use this chart as long as 10% of our students are being screened on a weekly basis. If our students move, or if we don't have 10% participating, we move to the other chart, which I'll show you in a second. That's the only difference. So as long as we have 10% of our students participating, this is the set of guidelines that we follow.
So just a question. So it doesn't have to be a random sample?
No.
Any 10%, even if it's the same 10% overall?
All right. This is just a review of that. If you, you know, if the chart didn't, you know, sometimes those charts get difficult to read, so I just wanted to pull it out differently as they do in the document. So in blue, the lowest, full in-person learning. Then in moderate, it's also full in-person learning. Then in substantial, we move into a hybrid model. And then in the highest level, we're in the hybrid model, but they warn us that in that hybrid model, you might have more illness that you're working through in your community and amongst, especially your staff. This I pull up for reference. If we're not screening 10% or more of our students, this is what we would move into. And the key difference in this is when you're in the high transmission level where we are now, once you're open, they encourage you to stay open and not move to fully remote learning. However, they do indicate that if you start to see cases sprout up, then you need to consider if you should stay open for hybrid or move fully remote. So that's the key difference. When we're doing screening, there's no indication that we should move to fully remote, although there are conditions where it would be required for us to do so if there was an outbreak or those kinds of things. But, you know, as long as we're doing screening, we avoid this box from showing up. All right. So things that we know right now by looking at these new guidelines, they, the CDC says, once we have in-person learning going, we should try to keep that going as much as possible, unless there's an outbreak. And then we talk to the Health Department and work through that process. That screening allows us that additional protection to stay open. As I explained, we have that different chart. And they do clearly say right now that schools should be the last institution in the community to close when numbers are rising. They do continue to say that families of students with health concerns or that live with family members with health concerns that are at a higher risk to COVID impacting them should be provided an option to continue to learn remotely. And then, once again, using podding, they use the terms cohorting or podding. That's the idea of just reducing the number of interactions that students have with other students throughout the day. We still have a lot of other questions that are out there, including when will the metrics allow for full in-person instruction? They've been falling for the last several weeks, but positivity rate has kind of leveled off in the 4% to 5%, although number of cases per 100,000 continues to slowly drop. One of our huge limiting factors in Illinois is the limit of 50 people in any one space in a school. That is going to play in greatly as we design a full in-person return. If that restriction remains, it gets really hard to do things like lunch, to do large courses like band, you know, that 50 is a huge limiting factor. So we're trying to have conversations with officials to find out if that is going to be changed, reduced in any way in light of this new CDC guidance. Lunch requirements, we still have six feet of distance required in a common lunchroom. So, you know, figuring out for a full day then how lunch fits into there is not an insurmountable challenge, but gets more difficult as more students return for in-person learning. The schedule, we need to factor into whatever schedule we design limits that mixing of students and how that looks. And then what we don't know is what the state requirements will be for full remote learning options. As Sam was mentioning earlier, we have many students that have selected the fully remote option and like the fully remote option. Illinois has extended that option to all students and families up to this point. What we don't know is with the new guidance pointing directly to students with health concerns with themselves or their families, if Illinois will change that guidance to be only students that are, meet that criteria, or if it will continue for all students for this school year. And then contact tracing, remember, that was that third key pillar of the five mitigations. We still don't have any indication if contact tracing changes at all when students are back full in person. Because remember, contact tracing is 15 minutes or more within six feet of someone. Well, we design our classrooms so students aren't spending 15 or more minutes within six feet of anyone because it keeps them from getting COVID, but it also helps us, you know, with contact tracing, which is a lot of work to follow through on that with every classroom, with every student. Now, if you have students to the best extent possible within a classroom, you could have a student that, because the distance is only five feet that we could maintain in a classroom, that they could be in proximity of three or four students, where right now it would be zero students. So what we don't know is does the contact tracing protocol change or not depending on these guidelines, or is it the same? And then if so, the amount, if we're able to keep up with that as a result, since they encourage us to do all of that contact tracing within 24 hours. So, you know, the amount of workload with contact tracing could get to be very large.
That's huge.
In full in-person.
I mean, right now, we're at zero. And if you have a situation where a student is, you know, four or five feet away from some, you know, three or four other kids, and that happens in every single class, it just like does, and it explodes.
Correct. For the two days prior to them having symptoms.
So it's, you know, there isn't an in-between. You're going from, it's either zero or it's
Correct.
This huge number. So this, hopefully, we'll get good guidance on this.
Yeah. So we're hoping that, you know, if it's the same guidance, then we're going to have to come up with some pretty strict protocols to make sure we know where every kid is seated and that they don't move. And, you know, otherwise, we will have to just be shutting down whole classrooms at a time if a student was to, you know, show up positive.
These questions, did you ask these questions during that CDC?
These were the types of questions being asked.
Okay.
Yes. Yeah. So not the IDPH one. That one, we asked of the DuPage County Health Department this morning, and now we're hoping to, you know, they didn't have an answer for us because they're not the Illinois Department of Public Health. But we did express our need for understanding if that limitation was going to remain. All right. So our next steps that we're doing is we're going to form another task force to come together to just focus full in-person return and look at some of these challenges and help us work through a plan. I mean, none of this is insurmountable. We can all solve it. So we want to work on that to prepare to bring back to the board on March 15th our recommendation for in-person learning for the last quarter of the year, should the metrics allow us to return in that model. So we want to build out that recommendation. We have to factor in all the safety guidelines that I shared today. We also have to build a plan that's responsive to changes in community metrics, and then prepare for additional guidance. I anticipate that IDPH will have new guidance that comes out responding to the CDC. We saw today from the DuPage County Health Department that they were recommending that we look closely at this guidance and follow it. And then, as I said, a plan in place for after spring break. So the way that this will work, this is kind of the timeline that the administrative team put together today. So hot off the presses, this is what's going on over the next month. So this is a new slide added today. So this week, we're forming, this weekend through next week, forming that task force. Leadership teams are going to put together for that meeting, some possible lunch solutions, schedule ideas, just to get the brain working for those on the task force of what are some possibilities, but not like the extent of the possibilities, just to seed the conversation. Then from that, the task force will meet the week, the next week, and our leadership teams will meet as well to kind of just brainstorm conceptual models that solve for the challenges within this new model. Then either a model is going to emerge that seems to work, a single one, or multiple ones will emerge. Our plan is to survey students and staff the week of March 8th on either, hey, here's Model A, B, C, you know, what do you think? Or if one emerges, this is the model that we're thinking works best for us, what do you think? Then from that survey, we'll come back, come back to the board on the 15th with, hey, this is what came out of the task force. This is the feedback we got from students and families and staff. Here's what we're recommending we do after spring break. Then the next week, giving families the option to opt in, opt out, however that process works, where families let us know which, how they're going to return. And then that final week before spring break, communications on everything, this is where we ended up, and really setting people up to be successful coming back from spring break. And also on that 3/22, on March 22nd, that's a teaching or planning day. So we're hoping by then, they know everything about the model, but also the number of students that are returning in that model, so that they can start planning for the last half of the year, or last quarter of the year, assuming that we can return if the metrics allow us to. So that's kind of the, from here on out till spring break, what we're looking at doing. Vaccination, some great news on this today. Up to this point, we have cobbled together the ability, whether it's our staff working on their own to get appointments, or it's through us being allowed to participate in other school districts vaccination clinics, where at 77% of our staff have been vaccinated. And then we found out late in the day yesterday that we were allocated a tray of Pfizer vaccines, so that's 1,170 doses for the District 99 Consortium. So for all of the educational institutions in the District 99 area, public or private, and village essential employees. And then, once we work through all of those, we also anticipate to have some doses, yet to be determined how many, for the general public as well. And then that, the way that we're doing that clinic is that we are paying the third party to administer those vaccines. For whatever ones go to the community, the consortium is going to pick up the cost of the community vaccination. So we're going to split them between those of us involved in it so that we provide an opportunity for the community as well. So details on that will be coming out throughout the week. We spent a good number of hours today planning. And then we hope to, you know, as each day goes on, we'll get closer to releasing information to the public for those that are in Group 1B that are able to access that. So next Sunday, here at South High, we'll have about 1,100 people, almost 1,200 people come through and get their first dose of vaccination. Then three weeks later, come back for the second dose.
Of that 77%, first of all, kudos, kudos, kudos. This is great. Great news. Of the 77, I'm sure 100% of our staff isn't going to be vaccinated. About how many more people do you think in our, do you estimate in our?
In...
In 99?
In 99, it's about 300 that are left.
That are left? Okay.
Yeah. And our surveys of staff show about 96% intend to be vaccinated. The other 4%, the great majority are medical reasons as to why they can't at this time, or they had, they had COVID in the last 90 days and aren't being vaccinated as part of this round.
So with the 1,100, is that, you said District 99 Consortium, is that just the community? Do I understand that right?
So the consortium is all of the high school district, us, and all of the other five elementary schools. So all of their personnel. And then the village of Downers Grove, Woodridge, Darian, Westmont, Oakbrook, and their Group 1B employees in there. So police and fire are at the top of that list, but there's other employees and personnel in that group. And then any private school in our attendance area. And then after that, after we've utilized all of those doses, whatever is left of that 1,170 doses would then be allocated for community members to come in and access.
Okay. So is anybody who is within our District 99 schooling or fire department, okay. And then you'll get it to whomever else in the community will want it. Okay.
Right.
When I think of District 99, I was thinking about the high schools, but I get it.
I'm sorry, can you like move a little closer?
Oh.
I can't hear you.
Yeah. I was thinking about the high school. I think District 99, I was thinking high school, but I got to think about all the services in here. So everybody in the consortium.
Okay.
Yeah. The way that the county wanted us to first operate was the high schools with all the elementary schools in a group. But then they approached villages to work together as a group. So to pool our resources, we just started all working together as one large group. And the reason why we are getting allocated vaccines at this point is because we are providing them to this wider group that, you know, will include some community members inside of it.
So even with the, you said the elementaries or whatever, are you, are we doing a, you know, there is a, they've set it up where a certain C elderly and then from there... you know, there is a, they've set it up where a certain C elderly and then from there, are you doing, are you allowing the younger kids to be included in this too, that happen to be District 99? Are we gonna do it based on age for those who are a little, or, or even those who aren't, or sickly, or are you gonna?
Yeah, the, the allocate, the way that we've been able to chip away at, Group 1B includes all school personnel. So we've been able to, by partnering with other clinics that are going on in other school districts or by our employees going on their own through a pharmacy. We're down to about 20% of our staff still needs to be vaccinated. So that last 20% of our staff gets included in this group, this allocation. As well as every other one of our school districts in our partnership is the same way. They've been kind of chipping away at it. This will take care of the last of all of their personnel. And then the last of the village organization personnel that are in 1B. And then we'll extend it to a certain number at the end of vaccines that are available for the general public. That's in Group 1B.
What's the plan for communicating to people how and where to sign up and all of that information?
Yeah, so obviously we're handling it all within our own organizations. And then the villages are gonna coordinate communicating to 1B in their communities.
Is, is, is the, let's say the 1,100, you know, 70 doses, is that a realistic number for all of the people that need to get vaccinated at this point?
Everybody within those organizations that are in Group 1B, yes.
Okay.
For the entire public in Downers Grove, no, nowhere.
No, no, but I mean, I'm just saying, is that gonna be enough?
Yes.
To get?
At the, at the beginning of this, it wouldn't have been even close, right?
Right.
We were at 35, 3,600. But by partnering with other school districts that had, you know, 30 doses that they could invite us in for, that had, you know, the, and we'll do that as part of this as well, you know, in part of our school allocation. We will be reaching out to a couple of other school districts to pay it forward with them the same way that other districts have paid it forward with us. So inside of the school allocation will be an allocation for other schools in DuPage County. A, a small amount, so that those schools that are slowly chipping away as well, we can help them just as other districts helped us and, and work it forward that way.
Yeah, I, I was just worried that this isn't gonna be enough and that we're gonna have to ask for more if we were concerned about our, our sender districts and, you know, all of their personnel plus the four villages that we are gonna go to, because we're not gonna go to Bowling Brook or?
No.
Or Oakbrook.
Correct. No, Oakbrook, yes, but not Hinsdale. Because the, the 99 Consortium also draws from Hinsdale, but Hinsdale has been working, 86, their consortium has been working on Hinsdale.
Oh, okay, so we don't have to worry about some of the other districts?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, I, I just wanna make sure-
No, no, it's fair questions, yeah.
We get those folks vaccinated.
No, with this allocation, we'll be able to finish all school personnel in the 99 Consortium.
Okay. Good.
I have a senior daughter who's wondering about prom and graduation. Are we gonna start working on plans for those as well?
Yeah, the, the buildings are working on those plans. As you heard, surveys are starting to go out about it. Yeah, and information on the end of the year activities will be coming out over the next few weeks. So that, that'll all be timed out. Right now, we're all working through that information, so. And then a common question that comes up around vaccines is students, and when does that play in? I don't know, you know, and I know people are concerned as to whether or not school's gonna man, if District 99 will mandate vaccines. District 99 doesn't control any of that. That's all controlled at the state level.
I thought, you know, I had a thought about this. You know, we do have a decent population in District 99, 18-year-olds. Any chance that, that they might get moved up on, on the list in terms of vaccinations?
I haven't heard, I've heard especially university colleges and universities advocating for college-age students so that, you know, they can return to, to college in that way. But I haven't heard any official movement in that way.
It just seems like it would help, might help us, you know, in the short term and then would help in terms of those students going off to college in the fall.
Yeah, I've only just heard of, of people advocating for it.
Okay.
But no official movement. All right, that's it for term to in-person. Any other last questions that I didn't answer?
No, I'm just excited that we're, we're able to do this. Really a good thing for our community.
Yeah, continuing to move forward and, and excited about the plans that are about to come next. All right.
Great.
All right, this one comes up every year at this time. Scott Bougazer is tasked with putting, putting together a committee that looks at disciplinary practices in the district. This usually happens in March, April of each year. And we just need two board members to represent the board as part, well, one or two to represent in this meeting. And then Scott works with your calendar to, to put that meeting together, so. Joanna? You're in, okay, and Shara, is that?
Thank you.
Anybody else? Anybody else want to arm wrestle for?
I was hoping somebody else might.
All right, I will have Scott reach out to you. Thank you. All right, I'm gonna have Jeff come forward. Jeff, I, I think you've seen him on Zoom, but-
I don't think I've ever seen you in person.
I'll have him introduce himself first because he's new to the district.
I was gonna say, it's kind of a thrill to be in front of a live studio audience again, yeah. Very nice.
Name is on Zoom.
I'm Jeff Burkeltz. I'm the Director of Human Resources for the district. And I think I maybe stopped by at a previous meeting and seen some of you before, but this is my first year of the district. And Hank asked that I come up here and, as we're coming in on this time of the year for hiring to begin, to give a little overview of the hiring practices as they exist in District 99 overall. There are a few caveats I'll point out as we go that are effects of the current pandemic situation still. But for the most part, all these things hold true. So go ahead and get started on that.
And this is Jeff's first year in the district as an employee.
Yes, that's true, yes. 94 graduate of Downers North, so. Long history in town here. My folks are still in town. So, all right, first step in the hiring process is just sort of the initial pieces of coordination. That's already started for us. We've already started sectioning meetings with the buildings and started to review course needs for students and their desires and how we're gonna balance those things out and look at how that matches up with our, our current staffing and what that may look like. And from there then, that moves on to the building level as we start looking at positions of need and that we'll need to fill. The principals then kind of coordinate with their building teams, their building perspective. So what are some of those specific needs as they relate to curricular needs, potentially extracurricular needs? If there's a need for somebody, for example, I know we're currently posted for an orchestra teacher, which kind of crosses into both of those areas. And then also the other thing principals will do then is set up the designated administrator, which I'll talk a bit more as we go on here, but that's another, a member of their building administrative team who works with the department chairs, who are the two people kind of oversee the hiring process as it moves forward. In addition to that perspective then, and as far as my office goes, then we make sure we have the written application and all that stuff prepared to go online. And the key piece there to see is the video interview, which essentially serves as a candidate's first interview with the district, as they're allowed to when they log in and do their application, to do an online video interview with some questions and then get a chance to respond as close to being real as possible. Although these days, it's very real, I guess, so. So next, moving in sort of the, the interviewing phase then, as I mentioned, the department chair and district, oh, sorry, the designated administrator work very closely together in terms of, you know, just shepherding the whole process along. And the first thing that happens then is the department chair then looks at those applications that have been gathered on, online and they, the first thing they do is look at those video interviews. That's a, really our key piece of information. They're gonna wanna see these individuals and, and hear them respond to some of our key questions and see what that all looks like. And then they coordinate that with their designated administrator. And then they narrow that down into figuring out what is going to be their slate of candidates for. Well, I, I have turned to the second interview, but technically the first formal interview that potentially is going to be live and, and hopefully in person someday. But right now, this would be still something that'd be done with a larger group online. So then they go through, they review all those candidates. And the next piece also is they wanna make sure after they've gotten, developed that slate between the two of them is looking at the interview advisory team. So what that is, is they collect two teach, two or three teachers who are invited to join them and be part of that group. So you have the designated administrator, the department chair, and as I said, two or three of the teachers from, say, the, the particular department who can help out. Another thing that also gets coordinated as well is cross-town coordination. So if there are, if there is an opening for a similar position at both towns, the department chair from the other side of town would also be invited to participate in this process as well. Obviously, there's a chance with sectioning changing year to year that, that candidate might end up switching buildings or doing the double duty across town at some point. So you wanna be able to have that input from across town as well. The interview advisory team then gets put together, also has some minor training or resources that are provided to them, I guess I'd call it, where they are, you know, stressing them about making sure that they are looking at candidates, putting aside stereotypes as much as possible, thinking about their biases they may come in with of all types. You know, similarity bias, things of that nature, trying to make sure that they are looking each candidate objectively and as fairly as possible. The other aspect of this too is, in doing so, there's some videos that they watch and the department chairs are responsible for reviewing that information with them to make sure that they come in as much of a clear slate as possible, so they can give good advice, as their title suggests, to the department chair and to the process and hiring the best possible candidates. And as we go through that process with that second slate, we wanna make sure that, in, in line with our district goals is that we are, making sure we are inviting in the diverse candidates who have made it through that first screening and have the qualifications, that they are part of the second slate that's brought before this interview advisor, interview advisory team. So after that first, first formal round, second round overall of interviews, then we get to our finalists. Typically, this will narrow down to approximately two to three candidates. And those are determined primarily by the department chair and, as I mentioned, the designated administrator. They work together to figure that out. And then the candidates for the finalists are invited to do several things. One of those is a performance assessment, and that can be one of numerous things. So they may have the candidate send a video of them teaching a course. They might actually do a site visit if that's, back when that's possible or will be again someday and see what they look like in the classroom in their own setting. There might be some sort of written prompt. So again, it can be a lot of different things and tailored to the needs of the department and what that particular position may be. And top of that then, the candidates all get a reference check, so the department chair will do that and follow up on their references, because we wanna make sure, you know, we have two or three candidates. The first candidate for some reason may pull out, they may turn down the job. Something else could happen, so we wanna make sure we're doing our diligence on all the finalists that we have. In addition to that, there's also our admin interviews. So the finalists that have been identified will also meet with the building principal, they meet with Gina for an interview. And those are, obviously we try to coordinate those on the same day. With the finalists, we probably will invite them in in person, because we'd like to have them do a tour of the building, that sort of thing. So up to this point, it's been virtual, but here we might be where you only have like one person coming in in a small setting with one or two other people. We can maintain our distancing and do that safely. The other part of this too is the background check. All candidates have that. Typically, we would invite them into the building and the same day they might come in and meet with Gina. But as I mentioned, that's happening remote. And so right now, we are with the company we work with, the service that does our background checks. We have some satellite locations where currently we're still sending our candidates at this point in time. And then last but not least, we get to the part where the offer is come in, the department chair and the designated administrator, they get together and they review all of this data we have so far. So you've got the written application, the video interview, the feedback from the interview advisory team. So you have all of these pieces coming together. The time they spent with the principal, Gina, and they determine which candidate is they would like to recommend to move forward. Again, they verify that back with Gina and also with the principal. And then the department chair is responsible for calling the candidate and making that final offer and welcoming them to the District 99 team. Assuming they accept that, then the department chair then also needs to make, uh, reach out to the other candidates. Finalists typically would be given a phone call to say, you know, thank you very much for your interest and fortunate moving forward to someone else. And then the other candidates, at the very least, will usually get an email that says something similar. Again, thank you for your interest in the district and this position and encouraging them to continue to apply, because we wanna continue keeping up good relationships with all these candidates, because we wanna make sure they come back. They may not be the right fit for this particular position, but the next one that comes along, they very well could be, so. And that's how we do it.
So we're heading into that hiring season, so we wanted to just provide an overview to everybody about kind of the structural logistical process and how it works. We've revamped it greatly over the last several years, especially with the video interview components. And then coordinating across both sides of town as employees are hired by the district, not by the school, and could eventually end up in either building, so. So any questions for Jeff or I on the process?
I was just curious if you had, I was just curious if you had, because we're doing the video interviewing, if, if it's actually expanded our pool? Since people don't have to necessarily come into interview initially until there's some, we know that there's gonna be one.
I don't know if it's expanded our, our pool, but I do think that we end up with a better field of finalists. Because you, you know, you're not just going off of paper, right? You're actually getting to see how they answer and if their philosophy matches up with our philosophy and, and those kinds of things. So I think we definitely end up with a, a better pool.
And to build on that too, talking to my colleagues and my experience too, is people who are willing to take that step, people get nervous about being on camera for whatever reason, they really wanna be part of the district, they really want that job. So it's, you get, again, people who are really invested in wanting to join us.
And have we found, you know, we've always struggled to try to bring in as many diverse candidates as we could. I don't know if there's any new things we've, new avenues we've taken in that area?
Yeah, I mean, we, we're, yeah, we're kinda tapping all of the places that you can, including our historical black colleges and universities and the different networks we have access to. Actually, we, what we have found over the last few years is the equity inclusion work that we're working on and the reputation that we're gaining around that, and the word of mouth from our own diverse candidates to become our diverse employees is our, our best recruiting tool to bring people into our district.
Yeah, to add to what Hank just said, I wanna say when we were doing the principal interviews for Downers North, just about every candidate mentioned, one of the things that attracted them to the district was our commitment to that work as well. So we're getting some, a good reputation for that and hopefully that continues to build momentum.
Thank you, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
All right, proposed student fees. This is typically where Mark would come and give a presentation about how historically we've done it and the direction we should go in. And I, I don't even have Mark here tonight because his recommendation is no change. So we're recommending that tonight as part of the action. Any questions on that?
Can I speak for Mike when I say good job?
Yeah.
Mike would like it to go the other way. All right, the next one is, is a option that has been open to us recently in response to COVID. And it, it's a, it allows us the option for people to run, roll forward their flexible spending account. We believe that, you know, this is totally appropriate to do with everything that's going on. It's in the consent agenda this evening. Any questions on this one? Capital projects for approval. Jim's gonna come up and provide you an overview of each of these three projects that went out to bid and is up for approval tonight as an action.
Good evening, good to see you guys. I haven't been here in a while in person. So this is for the summer work, capital projects. Three bids went out, about a half a million dollars worth of work. Back in November, I went through the three projects. I can briefly do that later. So we had 16 bidders, very good competition. Very hungry market out there right now, so we had really good numbers, very happy about that. In a couple of weeks, I'm gonna even be bringing better news for the T-99 building. We just bid that out and that came in very well, and I'll be bringing that to you in March. So these three bidders are familiar contractors. We've worked with all of them. In fact, one of them's working with us right now in our MFP project. As I said, under budget on all three substantially, so we're very happy. The three projects, the roof here at- The three projects, the roof here at South by the small gym and the outside tennis courts will be resurfaced, lined and painted. And at North, the big chiller that services the 1999 wing replacement in fall. So tonight, we'll be asking to approve three contracts later on, and questions, that's all I got.
All right, thank you, Jim. All right, next one is master facility plan progress, and this is our monthly budget report. For the first time in a while, I'm coming and reporting that our contingency has increased. As you remember, there was a major adjustment because of changes in fire alarm codes and they didn't know how far back we needed to do that within the project after working with the state of Illinois and the board's third party that does all of the reviews at the end. We've been able to revise the scope of those changes and reduce them greatly. There's also a few other changes in scope that were done and for some repair work in the North High Commons that we were able to straighten out, and then also some allowance changes that ended up with this new contingency going up this month. And you can see there, we still remain on budget and we still have quite a bit in contractor allowances that could come back at some point to us. So any questions, general questions on this that I could answer?
So we're moving along at the correct pace, so.
Absolutely.
Will be, will we be done before the estimated?
No, we'll be done on time.
Okay.
In time to return to school next, next fall.
That, that is perfect, perfect.
All right. Foyer requests, we continue to get them and continue to fill them, and they're available on our website. All right.
Okay, I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. Before I ask for a motion, I just want to call out the motion for the Board of Education to approve the lowest, oh, sorry, looking at the wrong, wrong motion. I wanted to call out the acceptance of the donation from the District 99 Education Foundation, which gave a $2,000 grant, South Music, Fine Arts Music Program.
Yes.
And just acknowledge, again, the fine work of the foundation and thank you to everybody who contributes to the foundation and all the people who work on the foundation.
Yes, and it's very important, especially now we're, oh, sorry. You know, Pizza Wars is going on, and I know I'm going to report that a little bit later, but it's very important that we take donations for as many of these grants as we can, and that's how we do it, is through donations. So please, if you know anybody who would like to donate to our foundation, now's the time.
Great work, great work.
So Carrie, are we just going to donate because we won't be hosting Pizza Wars?
Well, yes, and we also want you to encourage you to, to go to our pizza vendors and, you know, order a pizza for Saturday night or whatever.
Or every night of the week, you know?
Yeah, yeah, or whatever.
For years, they've been giving to us, so we're asking the community to give back to them.
Yes, and now more than ever, we need to support our local restaurants and pizza vendors because it's been such a tough time for them. So if you get a chance, look at our website, it'll give you the list of all of the vendors, and there's coupons, I think, involved with almost every single one. So please take advantage of the coupons and, and visit them. So that's kind of my little commercial, so.
Which will be repeated.
Sure.
But for the moment, I need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the consent agenda as presented, which includes A, the personnel report, appointments certified, leave of absence certified, appointments classified, B, the personnel report, retirement certified, resignation certified, C, the financial pages, D, the amendments to the flexible spending account plan, and E, the acceptance of the donation from District 99 Education Foundation.
So moved.
Carrie and Cheryl.
Thank you. Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Consent agenda carries. We'll move on then to the recommendation for action, the approval of student fees for 2020, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the student fees for 2021 to 2022 as presented.
So moved.
Carrie?
Yeah.
Joanna?
Thank you. Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the lowest acceptable bid for the HVAC chiller at North High School and award F.E. Moran Incorporated of Northbrook, Illinois, a contract in the amount of $214,100.
So moved.
Mike and Joanna?
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
Nancy Cupka.
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the lowest acceptable bid for the small gym hallway storage room roof replacement at South High and award Olson Roofing Company, Aurora, Illinois, a contract in the amount of $167,600.
So moved.
Mike, Joanna?
Thank you. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye, the motion carries. Next, we need a motion for the Board of Education to approve the lowest acceptable bid for tennis court resurfacing at South High School and award Sports Surface Pros Lake Forest, Illinois, a contract in the amount of $99,900.
So moved.
Joanna and Mike.
So was Joanna first or Mike?
I think so. You want to fight for it, guys?
No.
Mike and Joanna, we'll keep this speaker.
Okay. Mike Davenport.
Aye.
Joanna Vazquez-Drexler.
Aye.
Cheryl Fuller.
Aye.
Terry Pavisic.
Aye.
Rick Pavanato.
Aye.
And Nancy Cupka.
Aye, the motion carries.
One moment.
Yeah, that's it, okay. We'll move on now to our second reception of visitors. This is the second reception of visitors, which is intended for audience members to address the board on any topic pertaining to Community High School District 99. Comments are limited to three minutes. To provide all visitors an equal opportunity to address the board, if you need more time, you should submit your thoughts in writing to Mrs. Nidek, the board secretary. Visitors addressing the board need to come to the microphone and state their full name. The proceedings are being taped recorded for the purpose of producing accurate meeting minutes, and we are being livestreamed. And I reserve the right to modify these protocols if circumstances warrant. Your observation of these protocols is appreciated. Is there anybody who'd like to address the board? Come on forward.
Just come on forward.
Come forward.
My name is Carrie Swenson. I sent the board an email today, I think you probably got it, Hank, too, but I did want to come here as soon as you guys weren't live, and you guys don't read comments anymore, right? So it's in the minutes and this and that. I wanted to put it on public, on the public recording, a few things. First of all, your new slide that you presented with the timeline to develop a full in-person plan, in my opinion, as a community member, that should have been done. The guidelines have not changed that much, there should have been a framework, you've had a year. When, when we go back, we know we're in cohorts, we knew they were never going to say, let it go back to the way it was, right? Forty-minute classes or whatever. It should have been worked on all along. We shouldn't still be waiting for a framework. I'm disappointed. I don't care about the date, I'm not going to complain about the testing, I'm not going to come up here saying, get these kids back full-time. I totally understand where Dr. Thiel and the board is coming from, I watch every week, I'm active. There should have been a full-time plan developed already. The guidelines have minimal changes that could have easily been tweaked. So that's first of all. I am also, I haven't heard anything of fine arts. Our band programs are huge. We have friends of the fine arts at North, I know that. We have kids that are not athletes, that this was their life, and they're sitting home playing in a Zoom. Even when they're in person, it's very limited because they have to have time for the air to recycle through the room, so it's healthy for them. Now that we are in a different mode, our rates are going down, we have field houses, we have plenty of space that these kids with split masks for the blowing instruments, I should know that, but I'm not a musician, bell covers, plenty of room to spread, if basketball and football can be played right now and practice, there is no reason why these fine arts cannot be getting together and making music. For some of these kids, it is their life. That's all they have, that's their self-esteem, they've missed it for an entire year, the community likes it. We don't need to have an in-person concert. Put them in the gym, space them out, have smaller ensembles. At the bare minimum, put juniors and seniors in a concert. Parents will never see their, some of these kids play ever again, they're not going into music. The last time they saw them was prior to COVID. We didn't have marching band. Same with choir, same with orchestra. It can be done safely. If football and basketball and swim, we're getting the sports back with all these mitigations, look to IHSA, to how you can get those fine arts back performing together and not a video recorded like this, smaller groups with the mitigations. The next thing that I'm finding very dear to me, and I didn't think I would with my son, is seniors. Nothing, there's nothing for seniors. You have kids that are not actively involved right now, there's some kids, some great examples here, that are really involved in school activities, they put themselves out there. You have kids, a lot of them, that are not, and they're feeling forgotten, they're feeling gone, they're done. My child was a lifelong honor roll student and has four Fs right now. He doesn't get up. He missed the entire day today. And to mention, and not to mention, there's no consequences. If that would have happened pre-COVID, where he missed an entire day of classes, he would have got a Saturday or some other consequence, there's nothing. There's no dean reach out, there's nothing. So here I have a senior who should be, were in person, which I've been fighting for, for, you all know, from, since August. There is nothing celebrating these seniors. The parents' groups say that Student Activities needs to do it. Student Activities says, oh, that's a parents' thing. This is not our first time senior spring COVID rodeo. We were here last year. We can do better. They lost an entire year of performances, of games. These seniors, maybe not all of them, but a big chunk of them feel forgotten. I've talked to a lot of them, I've talked to their parents. And I don't know if that needs to be a district-wide thing, if it's a building-wide thing, there seems to be some disparity between South and North when it comes to senior things. Senior nights, clearly, we're not going to be able to have the same senior nights that we've had before. What are the plans for that? What is the plan for the senior band night? I know at North, that was a highlight, we had auctions, it was awesome. We didn't have it last year, understandably, so what's going to happen this year? Prom, graduation, our rates are lower, look around on social media, look at other districts. I'm not saying Florida, I'm not saying Texas, even here, these districts are, we have a whole page of all these things that other districts are doing for their seniors. And when we're asked, what school do you go to, Downers Grove, what are they doing? Nothing. So those are my things, I put it in the email, I'm sure I'm probably over three minutes.
Yeah, your time just expired.
Yeah, so I just wanted to, you know, those three things, while we're working, moving forward with the great plan that you've put together, don't let the little things slide because those little things are really important to students.
Thank you, Ms. Swenson.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to address the board?
We did, through the online forum, receive eight comments, five of them encouraging a return to full-time instruction in some format, one of them commenting about concerns about summer trips, one commenting on senior opportunities, and the last one talking about the livestream is not working. So I know we're having technical difficulties with the livestream, so that's all of the comments that came into the forum. And of course, those become part of the board minutes as well. Are we recording? We are recording and will, like we did before, we were livestreaming in the past, we'll rebroadcast it on the website, or on, on the YouTube channel, it'll get posted. So we're still recording, we just had technical difficulties with the livestream.
Okay, that was my question, thank you.
Yep, yep. So it'll be broadcast, it'll be up tomorrow, usually it goes up the next day, so I would think. Tomorrow, tomorrow we'll get it up. I say to the camera guy, all right.
Okay, Dan's not here for a report on Legislative Education Network of DuPage.
We have a meeting on Friday.
Okay. Sassy, Joanna?
No, we're having a meeting Wednesday.
I'm sorry, can you, I can't hear you.
Sorry, no, I don't have a report, we have, we're having our meeting Wednesday.
Wednesday, okay. District 99 Education Foundation?
Well, I'll just make my commercial again. Please participate in, in Pizza Wars this year because it is a virtual thing. Our vendors are on the website, so you can click on them and get coupons and that and be sure and order a pizza from one of our vendors. And also, there is an area where you can donate to the foundation so that you can be a little bit of some of our, our wonderful things that we do for our students. So please, utilize the foundation.
Illinois Association of School Boards, Mike?
March 20th, 10:00 AM, the DuPage Division meeting, virtual.
We have two, our next upcoming board meeting, we have a workshop meeting on March 1st, which will be at 6:30 here, Good Lord Willin and the COVID Olympics, and March 15th, we'll have the business meeting at 6:30 PM here as well. With that, I need a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Joanna and Mike, all those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? We are adjourned, thank you.
Thank you.